All to word. We'll call to order the meeting. For our December 7th. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have the nice flag? There you can go. A pledge of allegiance.
The flag.
United States.
And to the Republic.
Stand.
On the attention of God, indivisible, with liberty and no justice for all.
Fantastic. All right. All right, so. We'll do the roll call. Savannah, you want to do that for me, please?
Sure. Lori Rotella.
Here.
Gilberg Gravlin. I see him, I believe. Jim Baldwin.
Here, Seymour.
Ginny Harker.
Hello.
John Allen.
Here, Southbury.
Bob Nerny.
Listen.
Daniel DeVito.
Here, Waterton.
Chairman, those are the. Kurt Bosco.
Present.
Awesome. All right, Chairman, that's everybody we have in attendance today.
All right. Do we have any public comment? Anyone from the public on the meeting? I believe we do. Okay, seeing that there's no one that's logged in from the public. Move the item to the administrative items. The adoption of the June 1st, 2021 minute, minute. Meeting minutes. We have a motion for adoption. I think we carried that over some of these.
I'll make a motion, Bob Nerny, Waterbury.
All right, we have a motion by Bob. Can we have a second, please?
Second, Lori Rotella in Nagata.
Thank you, Lori, who have a second. All in favor of the adoption of the minutes? Aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain.
And we have two abstentions, and that's Kurt.
Three abstentions, Ginny Harger, Shelton.
All right.
Kurt Bosco, Middlebury.
We have, I believe we have three abstentions.
I have Bosco, Harger, and then. What's the last one?
I believe John Allen. Was that John? Did you abstain on that?
Yes.
Okay, we have three. Kurt. John and Ginny.
Perfect.
All right, we have a motion to adopt the October 5th, 2021 minute, meeting minutes, please.
Motion to accept and adopt.
Thank you. Motion by Ginny. Second, please.
I'll second, Bob Nerny.
Bob, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions, please.
Abstain.
John Allen.
Kurt and John abstain. All right, so move. Thank you.
I'm not sure if I was at that meeting. I don't see my name on either, but I don't believe I was, so I was going to abstain. Also, Lori from Nagata.
All right. Add to the abstentions, Lori. We could move the item. See, the adoption of the NVCOG Regional Planning Commission meeting schedule for 2022.
Chairman, if I may, you all received in your packet two versions. We can either meet four times a month, or four times a year, or six times a year, but we like to put it before the commission to determine which schedule you you feel is the most appropriate for our needs.
We, this came up last year at the same time. And we voted for six instead of four because. We meet so seldomly as it is. That we decided six would be better than four.
I think, I think, I think it's worked out pretty well at six for the, what we've just completed through this year. Anybody have any other comments?
I agree with the six meetings.
I have no problem with the six meetings.
All right, can we get a motion for, to adopt the, the meeting schedule?
To make a motion to adopt option A.
All right, we have that motion. And we have second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item D is referrals. Do we have Keith with us tonight?
Unfortunately, Keith was pulled away last moment. We provided you all with the referrals report, so you have the referrals that we have received since our last meeting on October 5th. I can answer any questions. Keith is our lead on addressing referrals. So if you have a question I can't answer, I can write it down and get you the answer as soon as possible, but we're going to give them to you this way. Move here and out, so you can review them prior to the meeting.
Right, that's a good, that's a good way. Does anybody have a, does everybody have that, or is there any comment on any referrals? Or questions?
I appreciate the detail that comes along when the referrals are sent out. That additional information is quite helpful.
All right. If there's no questions or any comments. We can just. We can close that segment. Savannah, you could report that to Keith.
Will do.
All right, and.
Excuse me. Yeah. I have been questioned. So I have a girl in my office. She's our administrator, administrative assistant in our office, and she was going to be watching on the YouTube channel. Is that not live streaming?
It should be. We have reached.
No, I didn't live stream today.
Okay, yeah, they told me to set her up that way on the live stream. Okay.
I can. Give me one second.
I'm trying to get an alternate from Nagata, so she was going to watch on the YouTube channel.
Yeah.
Savannah, did, um. Was there an outreach for. Membership? I believe we talked about that.
Yeah, sure. You're actually leading me right into the, the next section of correspondence.
All right, well.
Yeah, we, we didn't receive any correspondence. However, you'll see in your packet that I included a memo for you all per Chairman Baldwin's request outlining our current roster for the Regional Planning Commission. And so this memo has had one change since getting it out to you all. The Derby representative has resigned, but ultimately, I would like to ask you all to add an agenda item at our next meeting to discuss how to enhance our membership recruitment and involvement, and I've been working with the chairman offline on some ideas and strategies that I'd like to bring forward to you all in the new year.
Okay, great. Yeah, we'll look forward to that, Savannah. I think one of the things, if you can speak to maybe, uh. Maybe Rick Dunn also on that. And he could reach out to, uh. You know, the. The mayors in first elections.
Sure. Chairman, if I may, before we move on to the roundtable. Would the commission be amenable to adding an agenda item under 6A to 6B to have a motion about the regional hazard mitigation plan? We, we'd just like an endorsement from the commission as it's going to the board on Friday.
Sure, you want, you, that's, that's what you have here? We have to add that 6A?
We'll add 6B, which is a, it'll be a motion related to the hazard.
Okay, all right, all right. All right. We could do that. We could, uh, are you have any other correspondence?
We do not.
Okay. All right, so, okay, let's do that now as a housekeeping. We have a motion to add to the agenda under six. To add to a 6B, to reflect that we'd need a, a vote on the hazard mitigation plan.
I'll move.
So moved by Jenny, second.
Second, Lori Rotella.
All right, thanks, Lori. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so we'll see that at 6B. I will go to our third item, which is our round table. I'll kick it off tonight with just a report of what's happening down in. In Seymour. We've got the, a few activities going in our. Commercial industrial park. We're adding some, uh, some, one company's adding some storage space. Company has recently moved to town. A roller cover. We've got. Some other items that are moving forward. Again, with our affordable housing, that project's still looking like it hasn't started yet, and we also have, uh. We're doing a complete overhaul of the zoning regulations, and again, we're using the resources of the COG. Keith and Savannah have been working on that, so planning and zoning commissions on, running that. Through their workshops now. We open up, have a complete early 2022. So that's just about it. Can we go to? Gil, you want to give us an update?
For Prospect?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I just got my, my microphone, my sound back on. Sorry about that. Not, not much going on in Prospect. We had no meetings in November. We had one the other day. Not too much, just a few. Court case, one court case we're working on for a lot of junk in the yard, but that's beside the point. We're, we're working on a, a Mason Yard. They just submitted a site plan. We have a, a new funeral home going up in Prospect. So, other than that, not too much in Prospect, but thank you for asking.
All right, thanks, Gil. Bob, you want to give us an update from up? Northwest there? All right, while we, we'll move over to Lori.
Couple things. We made Church Street finally one way from Town Hall south down to Rubber Avenue, which is kind of nice now. It seems to be going well. We had our downtown festival this past Saturday, 4:00 to 10:00. It was a big hit. People are starting to come out again. The restaurants were full. We had vendors. And let me see, we have, I don't remember if I told about the Popeyes project is approved on Rubber Ave. They're starting to build that, and then we have a solar project. Before zoning right now, so we're hoping that gets finished up either this month or the following month. That's about it right now.
All right, thanks, Lori. Bob?
Uh, yes. Waterbury or?
Oh, okay, we have, well, we have Bob Clark.
Yeah, I've got nothing out of Woodbury that, just to repeat. Of the fact that. The commissions are still working on revisions.
All right, thanks, Bob. We'll go to Bob Nery.
Yeah, um. Interesting to hear that Nagata is getting a Popeyes because apparently we will be also. We have a request on Huntington Avenue in the north part of our city. For 2,200 square foot Popeyes. We're also in the process of reviewing a zoning application for an e-commerce distribution facility on East Main Street. 97,000 square feet. And. Finally, we're going to commence the, our affordable housing 830J study. Starting in January. We do have a consultant on board to, to assist us. Given the limited staff we have here, but we're actually quite excited about it. We, we're going to try to. Develop it in a way that is more broader, really kind of, you know, dealing with all aspects of, of housing that necessarily limited just to affordability, although that certainly will be a component. So we will keep you apprised as that, as we make progress on that, and also to give. The COG a heads up that we'll probably be reaching out to you for. A lot of your statistical and mapping information.
Chairman, if I may, that.
Yes.
Bob, you, you gave a great introduction. Our original housing profile should be done early January, and that will include all of the data that you will be looking for, so staff is working very hard to get that out as soon as possible. We'd like you guys to be able to have it with the, at least six months before these plans are due.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Great. We'll go to John Allen, our new member from Southbury, I believe, right, John?
Yeah, correct. Hey, Jim. Nothing to report this time, new member.
All right, all right. And Kurt is from, Kurt, you from Nagata?
Um, originally, but I'm now in Middlebury, and the zoning officer here for the last eight, eight years. This is my first meeting with the Regional Planning Commission. Happy to, happy to be a new member. Actually, my zoning career began at age 21 in Nagata.
All right.
Pardon me?
I know you're from Nagata.
Yes.
Remember your old days.
So in Middlebury, recently, we passed the cannabis moratorium to give us a chance to breathe and see how that's going to shape up. We received and opened a public hearing on a 24-unit senior. Residential housing project. It's actually going to be two cul-de-sacs, the way they have it planned. Two cul-de-sacs with single-family homes, probably ranging in price from $400,000 up. Obviously not an affordable project. And a six-slot subdivision. And that's on the heels of quite a, quite a busy. Commercial development in the past, or, yeah, commercial developments in the past year and a half on Straits Turnpike. Our Subaru dealership opened up at Cumberland Farms. We have a veterinarian clinic under construction as a two-building. Medical building, or two, two medical buildings, all in the same area of Park Road and Straits Turnpike. We're really excited about how that, that worked out during, and all were approved during the COVID epidemic. And then last but not least, we are working on our updated zoning regulations. This is definitely a work in progress. Hyrum Peck was our consultant on that. We're working diligently with him. That's it.
All right, thanks, Kurt. Ginny?
Well, just when I think that we're going to be able to catch our breath. That goes by the wayside. So since, I would say, September, and because I haven't been able to attend a couple of meetings. We have had a lot of activity on the. Warehouse distribution, manufacturing, office kind of component, and buildings. We have. Tully that is expanding and taking 127,000 square foot portion of a existing building off of Bridgeport Avenue. We also approved a new 80,000 square foot warehouse facility off of Constitution Boulevard. There's, apartment buildings have opened up downtown. There's at least four. They are, are full, and they have a waiting list. It's amazing the number of. New tenants that we have downtown, and in speaking to one of the managers, when I toured, one of them. Beginning of November, they said that a lot had to do with the fact that Sikorsky had gotten a new contract, and a lot of people came in from out of state for that. And, and then on the other hand, about, that was about a third. Another third were people that were downsizing. From larger homes in Shelton and wanted to stay in the area because of family, and then another third were. Young professionals that were getting their first set of living quarters outside of their parents' homes. Fountain Square is a. Shopping center that had gone dormant for over a year on Bridgeport Avenue, and that is back and being worked on. There, there was a change in the partnership. And when that happened, just before COVID, they had a hard time pulling in another partner and getting the financing for it from commercial lenders, so that sat for a while, but now that, about six weeks ago, really has picked up again in earnest. We have some new small businesses that we've approved for downtown. We just found out, I personally found out just today that Arugas, which is the. Had been on Bridgeport Avenue that had closed about a good couple of years ago. It's going to be reopening. There's new owners. Arugas is a chain that started in Pennsylvania, had some ties to Mohegan Sun or Foxwoods or something, and somebody came in and bought three of them, and, and this is the third one that they're going to be reopening. So, and they're presently located in a shopping center. We have a Ruby Tuesdays that closed, and right away, that particular building was snapped up by the marketplace, which is, I guess, up, up more around the Danbury, Middlebury area or something, and that's been completely remodeled. That should be opening. Very soon as well. There are, there's a. A. Project that is being built for about the last year, 36 townhouses on River Road. We have another one that's, we had approved, and then the adjacent property had become available, and that particular developer bought that, and he's revising his. Approval to include that, so he'll be coming back for a modification. There's. Some other, another new apartment complex off of Bridgeport Avenue by the car dealerships that will be accepting for review. And gas station, small office building. On a site on, on Lower Bridgeport Avenue. So it's. Constant, constant movement in town, that's for sure.
Right, thanks, Ginny.
Excuse me, what town are you from, Ginny?
Shelton.
Shelton, okay. Yeah, movers and shakers.
Did I miss anyone? No, did I, I got everybody, Savannah, on, on our, that's representing municipalities?
I believe so.
Chairman, you didn't get me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Daniel?
Yep, no problem.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. We're a small town. Everyone misses us. So we're working on updating, updating our zoning regulations, the format for right now. We're going to get the format straightened out, and then we're going to revise the content. We're working on a, a zone change on a section of Woodbury Road, which we had a strong public turnout for against it. So that's continued to next month for another public hearing. We just approved an elderly housing, 18-unit development on Straits Turnpike. Several units are affordable housing for that. There's a medical building coming in for approval for Straits Turnpike. Taft is coming in next month for a public hearing to install lights on one of their fields. We recently approved the gas station. On Route 262. And Crestwood Ford, which I think is actually their Ram dealership now. They were approved several months ago, but they just started construction on their longstanding dealership on Main Street, so that was good. That's about it.
Right, thank you. Um. What was the, what was the average, what was the last revision that you had on your zoning regulations? Said you're going through the revisions as well?
I want to say, I think it was 2015, but I'm not 100%.
Okay, so really not that, that, not that far in, in the past, but, okay. I know Seymour's has been well overdue for quite some time, almost 20 years. Okay, so I think we've, now we've got everybody, right? Sorry if I missed anybody here. Okay, so Savannah, on the discussion, are you, are you handling this for Keith here tonight?
Yes.
Reviews?
Yeah, I'm going to give you an abbreviated version, so if you have any questions, you're always welcome to send myself or keep an email, and we can address it, but I'm just going to briefly go over the memo that you received in your packet that Keith wrote for everyone. We just wanted to give a refresher, especially with new members joining the RPC as to when to send a referral, and so the first part, I'd say, is the, the general nuts and bolts of sending them. You can send them via certified mail or via electronic mail, and we have the website in which, if you choose to send it electronically, our email address is, is on the referrals webpage. And generally, the, the line of thought is that we'd like you to send it 30 days prior to the public hearing, so as these things come down, you know that you're getting ready to schedule that, that public hearing. Sending it to us sooner rather than later is always greatly appreciated. And so then there are three general types of referrals that we could receive, the first being a zoning referral, and this is for an establishment or a change of a zone, a regulation affecting the use of a zone within 500 feet of the boundary of another municipality, so that 500-foot buffer is kind of that key point. If it's in the center of your town and it's not within 500 feet, you don't have to send it to us. If you choose to do so, we'll still reply the way we do, but that's your statutory requirement. The second type is for subdivisions. So if you're subdividing land under two conditions, where the proposed subdivision abuts a municipality or includes land in two or more municipalities, that triggers sending the subdivision. Application referral to the COG, and then the last one is for the Plan of Conservation and Development. So if you're ultimately amending or rewriting your plan of conservation and development, this one is the one that's a little different in the statute. It's supposed to be sent to the COG within 65 days prior to the public hearing. So for the subdivision and zoning, it's 30 days. You can send it certified mail. You could send it via email, and then Plan of Concertivation and Development is for modifications, amendments, or your brand-new version, and that one's 65.
Very good. Thank you very much. Savannah did a good job with that.
Thank you.
Be proud. All right, brings us to our end of the year. We're going to do our. Election of officers. So we've got some, we've got new members, and again, I want to welcome Kurt and John, and I believe. Daniel, you've been with us, right?
Um, well, last meeting was my first meeting.
Right, okay, so.
Chairman, if I may. We have to wait until June per our operating procedure. But we need to, we have to start thinking about this now, because we have to create a working group, so we'll meet again in February, and I think that'd be a great. Opportunity to elect the people to the working group for the elections, and then we can get things moving for the annual meeting.
I thought, I thought you promised me a reprieve on this, Savannah.
I, I tried my best. I, I.
You let, you let me down on that.
I, I apologize. I promised, come June, we'll.
All right, all right, so, all right, so we're going to move to our item six then, and that's Aaron.
Thank you. So I guess I'm the only thing standing between you all and. What is probably the shortest RPC meeting I've ever been at, so I'll be brief. So, as we discussed before, in, in 2019, NVCOG received funding from FEMA to develop a, a regional hazard mitigation plan, and that plan will serve as municipal hazard mitigation plans for all 19 of our member towns. So we've been working with all of your towns and a consultant over the last 18 months to develop the plan. Project staff met with municipal officials and staff in all of our towns to review and revise issues and recommendations from previous hazard mitigation plans, and, and also develop new recommendations. We also held several municipal and public workshops and meetings and requested public input through, through several, several avenues. So. A multi-jurisdictional plan in 19 separate municipal annexes that incorporated all of that input were submitted to FEMA for approval in August, and I'm happy to report that after a few minor edits, FEMA approved the plan. And I'm happy to report that after a few minor edits, FEMA approved the plan in October pending local adoptions. FEMA will not view the plan as active until all 19 municipalities adopt the plan. So we've been working pretty hard over the last couple of months with, with our local coordinators and town staff to get adoptions on, on your governing board agendas. So far, 12 have adopted, three are on, so three towns have, have it on upcoming agendas, and we're working to get the remaining four approved by January at the latest. So since inactive plans needed to make your communities eligible for FEMA hazard mitigation program funding, it's important to get all of those done as quickly as possible. And I think we're on track to, to get that done by January.
Fantastic.
I think all of you, if I'm correct, are all set, but I think so. Anyway, so while it's not required by FEMA, we're going to be asking the COG board to endorse the regional plan at their regular meeting on Friday as a sign of, you know, regional support for this type of, of project. And a recommendation to that effect from this commission would certainly strengthen that request. So if I could recommend a motion to recommend to the NVCOG that they endorse the Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments Hazard Mitigation Plan, 2021 to 2029.
Okay, that would be, would someone like to make that motion just as Erin stated?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Bob, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jenny. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any, any abstentions? So moved. Thank, thanks Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to German, which will, you know, like Erin said, that'll be one of our short, first meetings, very, very productive. Got, got a lot done. Again, I like to welcome our new members. You know, as, just one note, we're looking forward to adding members throughout the, all the municipalities that are, you know, part of the, the COG, so you know, I guess Savannah, I guess we'll keep up, you know, we'll keep that recruitment going. All right. Anybody have a motion? Is that Jenny?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, have a happy holiday, everyone. Thank you.
Good luck.
To Kurt.
Thank you.